I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for all of your blessings, including the needed rain. We also would like to thank you for the mild winter so far. Please be with our Board of Education members as they do the business for the district. They must decide policy concerning our students and staff, give them foresight and wisdom to do so. We ask that you be with all of our students and staff for the holidays as they travel to see family and friends. The Christmas season is a time of giving, we thank you for all of your blessings. Also be with our men and women of the armed forces as they serve to protect, keep them safe so they may return home soon. We ask this in your name, amen.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Kincaid? Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Trup?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Order on the agenda, first thing on the agenda is 2.1, presentation of Employee of the Month and Friend of Education Awards. Certified Employee of the Month is Amy Nichols. She's Ponca City High School English teacher.
I'm going to present on behalf of Amy tonight. Her daughter is ill and they are in Houston. So, um, she sent me an email and wanted me to thank the board on her behalf and she's very appreciative. This is what her nomination said. Every day Ms. Nichols goes above and beyond for the school and her students. After attending the Engage Seminar this summer, Amy spent countless hours at the school using her own time to create lesson plans and designing project-based learning. Anytime someone else had questions concerning the seminar, Amy was always there to be our cheerleader and mentor. She has headed the mentorship committee and spends a lot of time and effort helping teachers adapt to the requirements of the TLE. We appreciate all that she does for Pohite. Pohite English.
Okay. Thank you very much. For our support, Employee of the Month, Dallas Cowan, school bus driver.
Okay, I'm gonna present to Dallas. He was nominated by a mother and I'm gonna read the letter that she sent to, to the nominating committee. As a mother, there are many life skills I try to cultivate in my children. Gratitude and appreciation are certainly some traits I hope my children have. But the skill of acknowledging those individuals that are, they're grateful for and appreciative for something we work on doing. Employee of the Month has been a good conversation starter for us. We discuss how it feels when someone recognizes you for something you've done well and for something that is just part of your job. Even when you are not recognized for things you have done. I've asked my daughters to think about someone they would like to recognize for a job well done. My fourth grader immediately thought of her bus driver. This is the first year she has needed to ride a bus daily. I've attached a letter to this and the following translation of her letter is, "I think Bus 47's bus driver should be Employee of the Month because he works hard and keeps us safe and he is nice." Thank you for the opportunity, for her expression of her appreciation. Angela Hamlin. And this is the picture of the letter that the little girl had sent in.
And Mr. Empting, the little girl is in the audience tonight?
Oh, she is.
Kim Berlum?
Oh, Kim Berlum, yeah.
All right.
Okay, he said, thanks. Dallas came to us this year from Texas. He has drove for about six years before and moved up here. And we're, we appreciate him coming up here and we always need bus drivers and if you know anybody else, uh, we need bus drivers. Or AIDS. And so, he does a good job for us and he, he took a new, brand-new route that's, uh, one of our trout-washing routes and has turned that into his own, so it's been kind of difficult. And making a difference in a young girl's life especially is, is very good for, uh, being a bus driver and stuff. That's what it is, it's all about the kids.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you and God bless everyone and all glory be to God and Jesus Christ. I mean, really, I mean, sometimes we don't even know what we're walking into, we don't even know. I don't, I, I'm just, I'm kind of, that's all I can say. I mean, thank God, God bless everybody. I'm impressed, you know, that you say, you know, "One nation under God" and amen. We gotta continue this on here, you know, in the United States and as far as the schools, schools go. And, um, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Dallas.
Thank you, Dallas.
The Friend of Education Award goes to Jane Morris for Ponca City High School.
I will be presenting it. Debbie, you might introduce yourself. I'm Debbie Meyer.
Okay.
And this is Tom Morris, Jane's, um, husband.
Other half.
Better half. And, um, Jane couldn't be here tonight because she's been a good mom and that's, that's the thing with Jane. If anybody needs anything, she is always there for them. She's amazing. Just real briefly, I just want to give you a little insight to how I came to be part of the Morris's family and I consider myself extended family. I'm working with their son, Skipper, at home every Tuesday and Thursday and I live for those days. They just, they just make me very happy. And one of the first books I ever read to their son was one that was recommended to me by our librarian as being a good book for a young man to hear and it was called, um, "The Hatchet." And it starts off with the sentence, "I hate lawyers." Well, immediately I get this look on my face and then it goes on in the first chapter, "To kill off the pilot," which Jane is a airline pilot and he is a lawyer and I thought, she said, "What are you reading to my son?" But it was a good book and, and we've deemed it. I wanted to nominate Jane for Friend of Education because, um, she is so selfless. And what I wrote is, "Ms. Morris is the mother of one of our special needs students, but she is so much more. She is very giving and always looks to see how she can help others. When her son received a new wheelchair, she graciously donated his old one to our special education teachers and we are using it with another one of our students. And I'm telling you, the child is ecstatic. He can wheel himself with his one good hand and he just loves it. And I even offered to buy it from her and she wouldn't hear from me. You know, she said, "No, he's got this and you can have it for that student." And that's the way she is, for everything. She has a big heart and we appreciate all that she does for Pohite.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Continue on, 3.1, comments from the public.
Do we want to get pictures? Is somebody gonna do pictures for, is Chris?
Well, we have, we'll get Dallas's and then if, if Mr. Morris doesn't mind to say, yes, Chris is wanting to do that.
Okay, well, I think, Mr., we better catch 'em, 'cause they're headed out fast.
Thank you.
I wanted, I wanted to personally thank the young girl too, Mimi. God bless you and, um, yeah. Thank you for the cookie today. She could chew any of it.
Okay. 3.1 is comments from the public, but we had no one file to ask or ask to speak to us tonight, so we will move on past that. Which brings us to 3.2. We need a vote to recess regular board meeting and call a public hearing for tribal leaders and Native American parents to discuss the participation of Native American students in educational programs, to comment on educational programs and to review Section 2.5, the Board Policy, Native American Community Relations. To have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Judy. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Doctor, okay, Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye. Okay. Mr. Little Cook? Welcome to our meeting.
Glad to be here. I missed sitting with you guys on.
We miss having you with us.
Well, good evening. Um, I think you guys got these in your packets, didn't you, these little sheet? Okay. Well, I'm gonna read them, 'cause everybody doesn't have these. Um, "The Impact Aid Program exists to help federally impacted school districts adversely affected by the loss of tax revenue caused by federal ownership of land or the enrollment of children whose parents work or live on federal lands. And that includes students in the military housing, low-rent housing, and Indian land housing. Ponca City Schools are impacted by those last two categories. We have students who live in low-rent federal housing and by students who live on Indian lands. And because we count students on Indian lands, we must have Indian policies and procedures in place and they must be reviewed annually, which is what we're doing tonight. Also, tribal leaders and Native American parents are given the opportunity to discuss the participation of Native American students in the educational programs within the district. This hearing is held at the December school board meeting tonight. Our student counts for last year, FY 2016, in the Impact Aid Program were 148 children living on Indian lands and 49 children living in low-rent housing, for a total of 197 students. I've made a preliminary count for this year for FY 2017 and it's down by 29 students to 168. The kids from low-rent housing is exactly the same, 49. The loss of 29 kids is from the kids who live on Indian land. And, um, our total enrollment for the district is 5176. And I give you that number because for Impact Aid, one of the qualifications for receiving funds is, um, one of them is 3% of your population has to be, you know, on Indian land or federal housing. And ours is 3.39, so we're just barely above the cut level. And so, we still get it, but we're, if we lost 10 or 15 kids, one way or the other, then, you know, we may not get it. But so far, we're still in, we're still in the program. Uh, the Impact Aid Program, just a little bit of history, has not been fully funded since the mid-1970s. Ponca City Schools receives a prorated amount of what is due and that prorated amount equals about 5.55%. And it's not paid at one time, it's paid over several payments and years, just because of the way the money's appropriated in Congress. Our FY 2016 amount, we're operating with now, is $60,294.69, which is down nearly $12,000 from the year before. And we've received one payment thus far for $41,452.01, which leaves a balance of $18,842.68, which we'll get over the next three or four years. The district spends approximately $5,400 for each student in the district. Uh, if you took the Impact Aid money and divided it by each kid that we count, it comes out to about $306 for each student. So, as you can see, the money partially replaces tax dollars not collected. And it can be used any way the district chooses. Ours goes into the general fund and pays for a variety of items such as school buses, books, utilities, et cetera, things like that. I, um, I called Randy this morning, Randy Empting, 'cause I'm just curious how much, you know, a bus costs to run to Whitego and back for a school year and the two buses we run is in a neighborhood of about $30,000 for total operating expenses. Also, part of the, um, hearing, I am supposed to collect data on students who participate in extracurricular activities and I included that as well. Um, for the 2015-2016 school year, which we're in right now, we have 29 footballers, 16 wrestlers, eight basketball boys, seven baseballers, nine softballers, 10 volleyballers, eight basketball girls, two bowlers out of eight, which is kind of cool. Uh, we have four cheerleaders, three high steppers, 18 marching band members, 15 symphonic band members, 13 symphony string members, five chamber strings, five golfers, one tennis boy and two tennis girls, 12 track girls, seven track boys, two cross-country, two soccer boys, and eight soccer girls. Now, some of these numbers are duplicates, 'cause some of these kids play more than one sport. Um, but there is a total of 910 slots available and Native American students fill 186 of those slots, which comes out to be 20.44%. And grades nine through 12, Native American representation is 22.41%. So, it's right in the ballpark of reflecting what the population is in a student body. And I added another category and this goes from K through 12. It's the Gifted and Talented Program. There are 626 kids across the district and 79 of those are Native American kids. And that's my report for now. I'll answer any questions you may have and then I'll step aside and let any parents come up to, I'd like to ask you guys questions.
Two questions, Chris.
Sure.
To be qualified, do they have to be on the head rolls or what, what does it take to be what?
It's, it's based on your address, um, on your address. I get a list of, uh, school-aged kids that live in low-rent housing from the Housing Director over on Broadway and then I go through our roster and identify those kids that live and addresses in Whitego and then I compile those and I take them out to Whitego and they verify that. They live there and then I verify that they're enrolled on that survey date. So, it's based on your address more than anything else. Um, you could be a non-Indian living on Indian land and you're counted.
And the other question, I think, pretty much the same report you gave last time, which I think we were all impressed at the percent of the athletes that are Native American. The $60,000, way short of what you really should be getting and it has been for years and years.
Since the 70s. If it was fully funded, yeah, it'd be like, um, over $400,000.
No hope to ever get what you're really entitled to?
Uh, they lobby for that each year to try to get the appropriation up to where it's supposed to be and really wouldn't take that much. I mean, we always say it's, we're a rounding error based on what they spend in Congress. If they would just give us that money, then, you know, it would, and a lot of programs have fallen off.
All states treated this way?
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of, um, schools have fallen off the list. But the expenses go up and the funding is flat, so it, um, creates a downward funding each year.
And one last question I just thought of. If we drop below the 3%, 'cause we're barely above it from your report, we get zero then? So, there's $60,000 we'll lose?
You would get zero Impact Aid money.
Right, Impact Aid.
You would still get your Title VII.
Yeah, Title VII is a whole different program.
Title VII is a different thing.
$60,000's Impact Aid, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
And, and the reason that we're affected the way we are, it's just a, kind of a quirk in the formula that it, because of the size of school districts we were. If we had 2,000 kids, we'd get all the money we were entitled to. But because we're the size we are from a, from a student population, that kicks us into a different formula. And, uh, uh, it's, it's just kind of one of those strange things and, and in Oklahoma, we have two groups that, that, that get Impact Aid money. You have the Impact Aid money that goes to military installations and federal property and then you have the Impact Aid money that, that, like Chris talks about, the tribal property and low-rent housing with, with Native American students. And, and so, uh, it just happens to be that in that, um, battle that takes place within politics, the formula favors military installations over Native American students. So, that's, um,
Yeah, there's been special fixes put in over the years by different congressmen for their districts. And, um, there was one put in for small schools, mostly to help Oklahoma schools, but it doesn't benefit us. If you're in Oklahoma school with a population of less than 1,000, then you automatically get 40% of your, um, Impact Aid money. So, if we were below 1,000, and, and a lot of them teeter-totter between 1,000, 1,005, no wait till that enrollment goes down and though, that'll be their survey date. 'Cause it means a lot of money.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. At this time, we need a motion to return to open session.
Comments from the public?
Comments, oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody wants to address?
Any comments, yes.
I just have a question. How much money comes into this school district for the Title VII program?
This past year, $222,022.
How much is for direct students? Lost and, uh, for administrative?
Salaries is right about 92% and then 8%, which is a dot. I'm gonna say between 25 and 30,000 goes to direct services.
Salaries or?
No, direct services.
No, I mean, how much did you say the salary?
I think it's between 92 and 91%.
Okay. I was just curious about that. One thing, so I wanted to introduce tonight. We have a member of the Business Committee, Trey Allen. Would you stand, Trey? And, uh, we're real happy that he came down to this meeting and, uh, is, uh, representing the Ponca Tribe. We have Kay Grant, Tilly, Allison, she's Karen. Ashley, I'm sorry, Karen. And I'm just a nobody. I was, uh, doing, uh, helping my sister feed cows when they said, you know, this meeting was going on. So, I had a choice of going home and taking a shower or getting up here, 'cause they'd be on time, so I came up here. But, um, I have a question. Was there any, has there ever been any consideration, um, to, to combine, um, with the, um, the, um, programs here, like, uh, classes that they get? I know you have one in a high school, I think, uh, where they teach, uh, some Native American curriculum or about Native Americans, what is it?
Native American Studies?
Yeah, and that's the only one you have. But, um, have you, do you have anything in, uh, elementary schools like that too?
I can, well, I can speak a little bit to the curriculum, Dr. Huntington. And it is in the social studies curriculum for all fourth grade students that they learn about Native American Indians. And so, I mean, it's, it's written in our curriculum. So, they learn about a lot of the different tribes, what lodges they lived in, what was their major food source, um, different artifacts and, um, art that they created in their, in their culture. And, um, they are all regional tribes, is, is how they, is what they learn about. So, that's, and then I also know that, just from my principal memos that I get, that during, um, Native American Heritage Month at each of our elementary schools, um, their Title VII TAs, um, teach about Native American culture and different art projects and different things like that.
How much, um, interaction do you guys have with the parent committees and, um, anything like that? I mean, how much input is there?
I'm at the board, you tell them to.
No, I'm just talking about, I'm talking about everything in general. I mean,
We have a parent committee.
Communication with the tribe, you know, do you guys have a lot of interaction with them?
Title VII Parent Committee and in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow night, running down the hall at 6:30. Welcome to come to that. And I can have more information about Title VII for you. But we also work with Tilly's program before, the TNA program down in Whitego. I coordinate, uh, NOC sometimes, I coordinate with Choctaw Tribe, Ponca Tribe, Futos. I mean, whoever's around is a combination. We do a lot of things that we work in conjunction with them.
I'm not.
We don't just go, it's a lot easier to bring in more people than it is to try to develop our homes.
Yeah.
You do include other people.
I'm just trying to actually, I'm not here to, um, point fingers at anybody or anything like that. I'm actually just wanting the word to get out to the people, even the ones there. And, you know, that's what's going on and things like that. And I, I just wondered, um, how many of the tribes are represented in this school district and, you know, how much?
There's over 50 tribes represented in this district from all over the United States. I know that there's all the six regional tribes. We have a pretty good population of each one of them as well.
That's all I have to say, I don't know. I'm Kay Grant and we've been trying to be concerned about our children within our community and we've got some programs that are there, that reside there, that work with our children. And we started to get concerned more about our kids because of things that were taking place with the different, uh, say, uh, the school system. Uh, the younger children like in Lincoln and, uh, basically maybe the high school and then plus the east, east middle school, I believe that's what it's called now. And, uh, we were being concerned because the parents were being, you know, having maybe some issues there. And so, Chris, he has his meeting, we started to try to get involved with that and hopefully this year, we was wanting to get more involved with some of the parents, with their children, the education part of it, as far as we mentioned, uh, the Impact Aid and we've kind of read a little bit about it and, uh, as far as the need there for our Native American children, just like he mentioned, uh, we have, say, low-income housing, uh, those that live within the city limits and far as, I would just say, poverty children. And, uh, there's a percentage there and then, uh, the Impact Aid, a little, little bit that we did look into was reading that, that the skid, that, that the system here, the school system, is how much that they get in far as the public schools focus on our Native American children within the school systems, not just here, but those that are, that do have the Impact Aid. And, uh, we were, we asked questions outside for those that are bigger, like Tulsa, Creek Nation. And, uh, we also met with, um, uh, I think Oklahoma City Area Office on some issues there within the school system. And I know we're not that large, but we do have Native American children that do participate in the academic, you know, the sports and everything. I, I know that you have to have good grades to, you know, to be able to play and participate. This year, I think we may have, seems like there may be a little bit more by the numbers that he quoted from the years in the past. And, uh, we do have some programs there, which I would like to have Matilda, we call her Tilly, to kind of mention some of the programs that we have within our area and we would like to, if we could, who we need to know to work with, with our children. And it's not just, he's like a one-man operation by himself. And we did question, you know, do you need help, you know, with our kids, with the high school area? We talked about, um, them as far as learning, uh, we talked about, was it them having after-school programs or having people to come in to speak, 'cause we do have Native Americans that are out there that are lawyers, you know, to, you know, to give them something to look forward to as far as becoming one, uh, police officers, you know. And, uh, we've got a number of people that are out there that we'd like for them to come in to speak to our Native American children, encourage them, you know, in every way. And, uh, the main thing that we looked at, it was, it stated that, that we need to work more with and focus on the Native American children in the school system. So, how do we do that? You know? And does the teachers, are they aware of all of that? You know, that's, this is coming from me. And it's because when we see that there's a problem, we, we want to fix it. We want to better it. We want our children to be better. We want them to become somebody better, know more. More graduation, you know, students, seniors, we want to see them more of them graduate, sort of dropping out. So, this is some of the parents that are concerned with our children in the school system. And so, we try to figure out, what can we do about it? And as far as the meeting goes here, I'm glad to be here, 'cause I wanted to come before the school ended last year to address some of the issues that we were having, you know? And, uh, how do we fix it? How can we better it with, you know, with, uh, with the school system here? Just like one child, you know, was waiting for the mother to, uh, come and pick the child up and it was a Lincoln School student. The mother got there, the child was gone. As opposed to, from my understanding, they're supposed to wait until the parent picks them up from the, you know, from the office. That child walked from Lincoln all the way down to that Conoco Station. And then we questioned, well, what happened? You know? The teachers in the office, the office people, were they watching over our children? You know, was, was there any safety involved there? And I know that I'm hearing that maybe that year, you guys looked into it to make it better, you know? And so, as parents outside, we live, most of them live in the community, just a very few live in town. But, uh, you know, if that's a concern, that was just a child. Maybe I don't know what Brady was. I think we have a parent here that, you know, was very upset, changed it to Garfield School. Here, the child's doing better. So, you know, I don't know if you guys know about this that took place then, you know? And, um, but we want our children, they don't have that internet service like we would, like to have in the community of Whitego area. And I believe that we are working towards that. And I know today that when I was going to school, I didn't have to go to a computer. I have a teacher, they're teaching us, telling us what to do. We had a question, we raised our hand, we got taken care of. Sometimes we didn't, we had to wait until later on, maybe the next day, to be helped with our homework or, you know, whatever. But I've always brought up something that took place. But I've always brought up something that took place with my child, maybe had a problem. I always brought it to the board to find out. And when I talked to the teacher, it was fine, they took off, accelerated. They made honor roll all the way through up to high school, never had that problem. So as a parent, I'm not just speaking just for my kids, that they graduated, they're going on to school. I have my education and everything, but the thing is, is now our children that are coming up, our future. And there's not that many, when you say native, there's just a handful, you know. And, you know, to be there, and so they're going to be recognized more by other nationalities, you know. So it's like uh we only have a handful, but still we want them to excel, we want them to go on to college. Is there offers to where that? I think Chris would probably need to look into more as far as before our children get to the high school graduation, you know, to start looking for other colleges and, you know, if, would y'all have to offer, you know, far as on school, going to graduation or going to college outside the area? Uh I think that um, I think not just paying salaries and uh buying the books and everything, but I think the teaching part of it is the most important thing within the school system. And I think that um, I don't know, far as study halls offered to help our children to be there, to uh help them with their homework. Uh we say, we just got off of work, I get off at four thirty, go home with my. And I said, if I lay down, I'm not going to get up, because I have a long day and I work at the clinic. And so I'm busy on my feet all day, I said, oh my God, I gotta go. So I blazed over here because I wanted to be here. And um these are just some of a little bit of issues that we have and we, we want our children to be better. We want them to achieve things and move on to be a better person and um to become somebody, just like anybody else. Any parent wants their, their child to do a good job, wants them to get their education to go on, to go on with their education, to school somewhere, its location, wherever they might be. But um, but that's my concern with our native children. And I know a lot of them don't have a vehicle to get up here or, you know, uh to try to work with their kids. But there's, those kids are hungry, they're hungry, they want to be in the sport. They want to accomplish something. But do, do they get that little pat on the back? Or do they holler at them in the classroom? So then they get closed in to a shell where they don't want to come out because they're afraid to speak up or they're afraid to say something, you know. So how can we fix that in the school system? Not, and I know there's other children that are poverty children that are non-Native Americans. I've worked around poverty children, I've been around. And just encouraging them makes them feel good that somebody does care, you know. So these are the things that, you know, I was taught to teach our kids to go on, get that education. Go on to school because you can be just as good as the other person. You know, so that's what was taught in my family and that's what I do with my kids. Now I'm doing it with my grandchildren, you know. So these are the things, and there's today, there's grandma mothers that are raising their children. So what do we do, you know? Because if they don't know, within we as programs that we have that are there, we're there to try to encourage our children within the community. And have them, you know, to look up to somebody that's a leader and to make them say, you can do this. You know, this is where we come from. And uh but that's my concern far as, you know, do we really know about that Impact Aid? Far as what is it really there, the money sounds good. But what can we do with the district to work with our children? Because it does stay focused on Native American children. To get their education, encourage them, what, what do they need? What, you know, something you can say, what can I help them with? What can we make it better for our Native American children in the school system? See, so these are some of the things that maybe we lack, I don't know. You know, there's big numbers there, it sounds like a lot, but not really for the whole fiscal year. It's not really that much. Because when you look at the salary of the individuals that are in the school system, that are aides and his salary, maybe we, if we can make it better, what can we do to make it better? See, to reach more of them that are out there in the high school. I did a survey over here at the Eastern High, I got a total amount of nine hundred children, but I didn't get the amount of the Native Americans there. But we had six kinds of surveys that came in and we reviewed them and everything. So these are the things, you know, do we need to do surveys, not just this across the street, high school, to see what we can to make it better with the kids that are within the system? You know, I don't know. But um I just want to say that I'm glad to be here and uh I hope that it will get out, maybe. I don't know if y'all have teachers' meetings? Do you talk to the teachers? Do y'all have a, a meeting with all the teachers within the school system? And what can we do with the kids, those children in the schools? I don't know, but maybe they need to be educated on what they need to focus on, you know, because the money that's out there is just not floating around, you know. And the education is stressed in that Impact Aid. And we're hopefully going to start doing some fundraisers, in which they already have did fundraisers in the past, but we're going to look a little bit more up and higher on what can we do to help with our Native American children in the, in our area. And this is Matilda Bronco, she actually is my daughter. And she is with the, she works with the children within the community. And I would like for her to introduce herself far as what their program is all about and what they focus on, kind of help you understand what they're trying to do within the area down there, okay, Matilda?
Hi, my name is Tilly Bronco and I am a graduate from Poli High. And I went off to school, um Northern Oklahoma College as a single parent. So I raised two, uh two of my kids, one's in college now. I work for the Ponca Tribe of Oklahoma and I am the director of the White Eagle Transit. And so I started getting, um I worked there in two thousand and twelve, I started there. I was at the casino first and then I transferred over to um the Transit, they were in need of a director. So um with, with that said, I started getting involved with our community. Um we wanted to help um our Native American students, um because there are a lot of times, I work with the youth program, and you guys might know her name, Nellie Rufface. She is the youth services director there in White Eagle. And um we started having directors' meetings with the tribe and it kind of got all, nothing but directors coming to the meeting. And so what is all the programs going to do and how are we able to help our children? So uh we came up with our own name and it was Tradition on Addiction. And we are there to um help with our children, um with substance abuse, um alcohol, drug and alcohol related, sustain from using those, um education, our culture, um and actually knowing who they are. And so we work with the kids down there and our group has grown with our children, probably thirty to forty kids that actually participate in um after school program, whether it is with them or uh we have Behavior Health is one of the programs down there and that's under Jake Roberts. He's under the clinic, so he also is a counselor. And he helps with um some of the kids that might need um some to like, act like with the family side of it, under the clinic, but they would have to go through the clinic to be seen. So might, they might have some struggles at home, like mental health and all that and they um. But we also, their M S P I program is a methamphetamine um prevention program they have. And usually the state usually changes it up. I know I worked for um Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquent Prevention. I was a director at one time in two thousand and two. And um so they change those, um and there's categories that they have to go by, whether it's um family oriented, um community based, you get out and reach the community and you help with education with their. And right now we have an awards program for Native American students that are in the school district, but when they come down there, they're to show their grades, um they'll get a certain points. Um for community service, they get points. But it's just trying to get them involved and be able to um help out with um their own. We want them to look up to where we're at. And our tribal leaders, um we also have a, we started a youth council so they can start learning their goals as when they get older. And we also have um like our Head Start program down there. Um we, they're getting ready to have their powwow, so we want them to know themselves, if, if, you know, who they are and be proud of who they are. And one thing that they face at the, at youth services that I don't know if you guys know, like she said, we don't have uh Wi-Fi. So there's like grades of seventh grade or eighth grade across the street, um they have to take home laptops. Well, this is and the students face when they have to leave from here to go back to White Eagle, they don't have Wi-Fi or they don't have internet connection to do their homework. So then that child is facing a failure already because they can't do their homework. So I don't know if you guys are aware of that. So whenever you guys went to a computer base to do your homework, whether it's there or up at the high school, when they go home, they're not, they don't have that. So that's already one effect that they are not able to and they face it. So whether they do the homework or they don't do the homework, they're going to school with zero or they're going to turn it in and they're not going to turn it in because they didn't have, they weren't, they don't have that availa- availability to do that. So we started so searching for what are we going to do to provide them that? Well, as Mr. Howell here, he has um came up with other programs are having a problem with, we have, as you guys do as well, have to, everything, you email each other, you know, send reports in, for whatever, for whatever reason, we use the internet access. So like our grants, I have something I have to turn in, most time you have to turn it on, you have to get online, turn the report in. So we run off of a T-line, like three or four buildings are being off of, you know, a T-line from the tribal affairs. So I, as Transit, I ran in with um, to help out the youth services, those um hotspots. Just trying to find out something that I can help our children be able to go there, do their homework. And, but sometimes those accesses get, you gotta have a PIN number to get on there or you can only service six off of that. You guys know what I'm talking about? So that's a, that's what we're having to deal with. And so um, and for parents, the parents or grandparents don't have access to see grades. Or nowadays, you just put them on the internet and they don't ever even see a report card. Back in my day, you had to take it home, get a parent's sign, bring it, bring it back to school and get credit. Well, now it's all online. So, you know, that's just one part in our area where there's not um free access to Wi-Fi. So that's just one. But I've, I've let you guys know, I know one, one of the people on the board had attended one of our Title VII meetings and, and um he was not aware of that. So I don't know which one of y'all was, but it was last year, that he did not know that, that we didn't have that there, so. And I know there's other reasons why you guys have it here, police department have to um be able to be, get on their computers and bring somebody up, but um Stillwater is now going to that Wi-Fi too. So it was just nothing to take home. And so the B I A uh also works uh with our TNA program. We have uh meetings every third day, it's a speaking, and it's open to the whole of the community. Have a look at us, be able to um do. And I would, uh, I would, uh, be able to, um, to. Well, you know, it's whether it's my trade, myself, our grandparents, we have secret citizens down there, but they, 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 but we have that down there. We service thirty-six people on Mills on Mills on the outskirts of our rural areas. So, um, we have, uh, we started a neighborhood watch and I'm just kind of like going down my list if this is my notes from, uh, last Thursday. So we, uh, we have neighborhood watch, we have put up gates. I don't know if you guys heard or seen on Facebook or anything like that, but just to let you guys know, we also, um, to keep Matthew.
They go back and forth, uh, between their special classes when they break to go to music or break to go to PE or break to go to lunch or come back, come back, come back in after recess. I don't know, um, Jill, on a, just since you're the most recent elementary principal, you know, how many times in a day are elementary kids going to be taken to the restroom?
As a group, typically, um, three times. About.
At, probably a minimum.
Minimum of three and then they're allowed out, um, based on, well, no, throughout the class periods, the teachers allow them to sign out and go and then they monitor like how many times if they, if they think it's excessive or if they, um, if they see that they're using it twice, then they're, they're pretty much free to go anytime.
So there's three basically scheduled breaks throughout the day. And then there's also individual opportunities for students to go to the restroom based upon whatever system that individual's site has. But again, the same thing, my advice would be that parents that have that concern need to go talk to that building principal.
Because then I'd at least take it back to the parents and let them know as well. Because we, you know, they do come to us and they, they, they want us to find out.
Sure.
And, you know, we're there to help out any way we can, whether, and I know the other, other issue is, um, that tutor, like she had said, that there is a issues with, you know, tutors after school. Well, they face the ride home, you know, there's no, um, a ride home after because, you know, when, when are those classes, um, whether like if they're at the, the elementary's, you know, age? You know, when, when, when does there time that they get to be able to, you know, stay after and be able to be tutored if it's needed in the area? Cause I know at the high school, there's a lot of bus goes at what, four, four or something? Four forty-five or something like that, they get back to White Eagle area by that time.
Yeah, I mean, the bus schedule's always going to affect that. Again, if, if there's individual circumstances where students need additional help, again, the proper place to talk about that is the building principal.
That, you know, maybe he get somebody at the youth services for after school right in our area because we, we don't have that. You know, there was a church that was offering to, to house our children if they had to go. So we put it in the newsletters, you know? You know, there's a sign up, you know, we, we try our best to reach out to the parent or the grandparent, so.
Sure, okay.
I'd like to ask quickly just the homework issue with your kids that are in, um, eighth grade through high school. Um, using our Google products that we're using, those kids can download and assign. And they can work on it offline, so they don't have to have internet unless, you know, they were doing some type of research or something. But to, just to do their daily homework assignments, all they have to do is download those onto their computer and they can work with it, work on their assignment offline.
Did they, did they know that?
Yes, they did. They did.
Cause then that'd be easier to even educate the parent or the youth services. You know, they're not, they're not needed to have internet. And so they could be telling us, well, I don't have it, so now I'm not going to do it.
Yes.
So in other words, yes, you can, this is how you do it. And actually show them, show the parent, show the grandparent how, this is how they log on. Because, you know, I've, even at high school, I've helped my daughter, she's in ninth grade. So, you know, I kind of stay up all night just trying to finish, you know, something that she said I needed the internet, so.
The wifi reception in Polk City is different in all areas of town.
It's not that great.
It's not just unique to, to the, you know.
Unless you have a router.
Community, so that's why we have those options for those kids where they can download those assignments and work on. And then when they get back to school, then they can send it to the teacher.
Okay, thank you.